Regular meeting of June 21st, 2021 to order. Before we get started with the roll call, I want to welcome Shannon Hanson, our new Budget Finance Director for the City of Belvedere. So, welcome Shannon. And the clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal is absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that we have, our freedom, our country, our community. We ask, Lord, that you be with the families of those that were lost in the fire this past week. And we want to thank the first responders, both police and fire. And we want to thank our military men and women as well. We ask for your guidance with this meeting tonight. In Christ's name we pray, amen. We do not have any public comment tonight?
No.
Is that correct? So, item number four, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of June 7th, 2021, as presented. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion, any changes, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. We have no public hearing tonight under special messages and proclamations. We have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions. Thank you Pam.
Good evening. Before I get started my report, I just wanted to extend my sincere appreciation for the prayers and support that have been extended to me and my family this past couple of weeks. So, I just wanted to say thank you. There's a, we talk a lot about how do we support our small business in our community. So, I just wanted to kind of share some things that Growth Dimensions has been involved in over the past year as well as the past few months. As a reminder, we do have Fast Track Training Program. This provides some short-term training facilitated by two experienced entrepreneurs themselves to help aspiring businesses and existing businesses to sustain and grow. We also have a resource called Compass. And this is supported by the Kaufman Foundation as well as the Fast Track Program was initiated by the Kaufman Foundation. This is to help businesses build, develop a business ecosystem of resources that are available in our region. Last week, we had a meeting that was to bring together partners, resource partners within the region that will be able to help us develop that resource map for businesses and identify those assets and also identify what are some of our strengths as well as opportunities and gaps in our area. And finally, we're working with Region One Planning Council on an SBA Navigator Program grant. This is to connect aspiring and existing businesses to services and resources that are available in our region as well as through the state and federal government. So, I want you, if you have a small business that's interested in any of these resources or they don't know where to get those resources available, please encourage them to contact Growth Dimensions and we'll try to help direct them in the right place. We've also been involved with a number of new projects. We've been engaged in 19 active industrial commercial projects since the beginning of this year, beginning of January. Most recently, we submitted for a project called Project Runway. This was a, is a food processing company, I'm sorry, food production company that's interested in a location about 150,000 square, I'm sorry, 150,000 square feet or 30 acres of land. And this could potentially bring 70 million of investment and 150 jobs. And in collaboration with the City of Belvedere, Growth Dimensions is submitting a package to a project called Project Kelly. They're interested in Belvedere as a potential location as well as possibly outside the state of Illinois. This would be a 90 to $100 million investment with 120 jobs for distribution and light production. We're also working with, well, a company has recently been located in Belvedere called RPS Products. They've secured 1805 Industrial Drive in Belvedere. This is 100,000 square foot building. They provide best air furnace filters and humidifier accessories. So, we're looking forward to talking to them and see how we can help support them in Boone County. And so, we'll share some additional information once we've had an opportunity to meet with them. And finally, we've been working with some, three local businesses on expansion projects. Many have, have not shared their plans or want to share their plans at this time. But we'll keep you up to date on how those develop. And in collaboration with the school districts, we've been, we were awarded the 60 by 25 Community Designation. This is a designation that was provided by the state of Illinois with, that helps us provide, get some resources for our educational programming that will lead to approaches for college and career readiness in our community. So, it could help with technical assistance as well as maybe identifying some resources to help fund some of these projects. So, we're working with both community college districts in order to provide innovative solutions and connect them with businesses, business organizations, workforce, human resources, and community organizations in order to help collaborate on some potential solutions for education. And you know, as we mentioned in the past, developing that workforce pipeline is critical for us to create and retain jobs in our community. So, we want to make sure that we're connecting with those programs and that, those, that key information that's necessary as we move into tomorrow's needs for companies' workforce needs. Sorry. Any questions maybe?
Alderman Porter? I did have one question actually. It's on the accounts payable here. I was just curious about this. For Growth Dimensions, they show up investment, annual investments, it says $55,000. Can you maybe talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So, we provide a lot of services for the City of Belvedere as well as Boone County. We do not get grant funds from many, as many organizations will qualify. We do not have a membership program. It's basically on investments. So, our investments are used to help us with our marketing, help us do outreach, help us fund staff. We have a small staff of three individuals that helps with marketing arm and bringing resources to Boone County. So, in this past year, we have brought hundreds of thousands of dollars through the BID grant as through Cures Grant and other resources through Forward Boone. We initiated Forward Boone, which is, we facilitate ongoing to provide solutions through this pandemic. We've helped expanded our programs to develop more programs towards small businesses and retention. We also provide and execute and manage the Enterprise Zone Program on behalf of the county. You're welcome. Oh, and the city, I'm sorry. When I say the county, I mean the city and all the, but sometimes I should say that more often.
Alderman Burton?
Thanks Mayor. I just have a question on that real quick. So, that's $55,000 that we pay Growth Dimensions. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Alderman Stevens?
I thought I caught it. Was RKS makes filters for?
It's RPS Products.
RPS?
Yes. And they're most known for their best air furnace filters.
Any other questions for Pam? Alderwoman Frank?
I don't know if it would be for you or if it would be for Gina. But do we know what's going on with the family video store? Somebody moving in or out?
Yeah, actually Gina and I were texting back and forth, I think, one day and saying, "Hey Gina, I think there's, there's some activity there." So...
Yeah.
For probably about two months now, I've been in communication with, it's a small grocery store that focuses primarily on delivery. They deliver within a 15-minute radius of them because it's more like, oh my God, I'm in the middle of dinner. I just, you know, I don't have enough of something and they're kind of catered to the last minute. I need this plus a pharmacy. So, when you don't feel good, you know. But everything is quick. It's not like Walmart and shipped and stuff where you have to do it hours ahead of time. They're more of an immediate delivery facility. So, then communicating back and forth with them for a while. It has come to my attention that, you know, they were cleaning it out, building, putting shelving units in. Not sure if that's the grocery store because everything that's being done does not require building permits. If it is the grocery store, last time I talked to them, they were informed that they would need electrical permits to put in the coolers. Haven't received those yet. Doesn't mean it's not the grocery store. They just haven't got to that part. You know, they could just be prepping it. But until someone comes in to get a permit or one of us goes and knocks on the door and says, "Hey, who are you?" Not positive if it's the grocery store.
Alderman Stevens?
I pulled into the parking lot today and, because I've seen all kinds of boxes inside and it looks like shelving units in boxes, so...
I think they were doing floors too. Thank you Pam.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Pam? Thank you very much Pam.
Thank you and have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item seven, approval of expenditures under general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,218,301.66. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry? Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I have a few here. I think this is probably for Gina. There's some barbecue refunds. Are we not doing the barbecue?
That may be more for Sarah, but my guess is that there is probably some competitors that pulled out within the, you know, if you pull out so far in advance, you get a refund. But the competition is still going. I think last time Danny said they had over 50 teams signed up.
Okay. And then I already, I already called you and talked to you about page three. The Dean Foods sponsor shows $4,000 for the sponsorship. That, that is actually not a bills payable. That's actually, should be a credit?
Well, Dean Foods has our electronic information, so, because they pay us monthly for their parking. So, they put the sponsorship there and we had to move it then to our Heritage Days Fund.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's a check.
And then we pay, on page seven, we pay Sickage Accounting for audit services. So, I guess I might be a little bit confused. We, what does Azvatar then do for us?
Azvatar?
Yeah.
They are a entity that we contracted with several years ago. They're the ones that did the audits of Nikor and ComEd and Comcast and what have you to find gaps in their collections of our portions of the utility taxes, the franchise fees and what have you. Pursuant to the contract, they then get a contingency fee basis of that.
But they don't do our city audit. That's Sickage.
No, no.
Okay. And then these, I think, are some for the police. On page 10, we have a Barnes Auto Body for repairs for Squad Number Five for an accident? Okay? He trashed a squad car?
I'm not sure which vehicle that's in relation to.
Okay. And then there's a couple on page 11. Denny's Car Hauling where we had a rocket scooter tow and I think Squad Number Ten towed.
I guess the squad that was inoperable and had to towed and the other vehicle was subsequent to probably a driving while, suspected murder, he was.
And then a couple more toes on page 14 for squads?
Yep. Some regular squad maintenance issues where squads have not been, older squads that, you know, are just, you know, having general wear and tear, have been breaking down, not being able to be started without being towed to a shop.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Deputy Chief, if you would make a note of the Barnes Auto Body on page 10 and the repairs to Squad Five and maybe give us a follow-up on that.
I will do that.
Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Alderwoman Frank?
Marsha brought up something about the towing. Do we alternate people to do towing or is it always Tilford? Do we always use Tilford for towing or do we alternate towing companies?
No, we've been using the same, sorry, we've been using the same vendor for the towing services. Tilford has also agreed to, to take care of any squads that have a flat tire and that sort of thing where they'll just come out and replace it on the spot.
Anything else in the general and special fund expenditures? Alderman Stevens?
I seen on page seven, and I probably, it says Kathleen Tobin. I take it that's Becky Tobin that we were? Okay. They just threw me there for a second.
That's her legal name.
No one knows Becky.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor for general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,218,301.66. All those, when called in favor, will answer aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. And then underwater and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $569,806.72. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Porter, second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussions, discussions on that? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion and second then for water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $569,806.72. All those in favor will answer by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. Under Committee Reports and Minutes of City Officers, A through E has been recorded and placed on file. And under F, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Building, Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of June 14th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Alderman Flurry. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay? I was going to take a roll call.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, moving along. Under nine, unfinished business under A. Ordinance 524H had been tabled and the city attorney, I think, had tried to have some communications and I don't know if he was successful, but I'll turn it over to him to clue us in.
Mr. Mayor, I've reached out to Mr. Chathari's attorney several times over the last several weeks. Each time he promised to get back to me. I did hear back from him again today. And he informed me that Mr. Chathari is not returning his phone calls nor communicating with him on this matter. So, I recommend at this point to remove it from the table.
Okay. I think we recall that the last meeting, we were hopeful that maybe Mr. Chathari would contact us, but that, I guess, that wasn't to be. So, do we have a motion to remove ordinance 524H from the table? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion? Yes. Alderman Snow?
So, if I may ask what Mr. Drelle's request at this point, because it's to allow video gaming. If we're not moving forward, if you can't do anything?
No. I, I think because we haven't had any correspondence with him and he's decided not to, not to respond at all to the city, we would go ahead and break this, take this off the table and bring it off the table and then bring it up for a vote. And since he's not here, we don't have any communications. He'll have to get back in line and resubmit. Okay. We have a motion and a second to bring ordinance 524H off the table. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No. But bring it off the tables that we're voting on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yes, vote, bring it off the table.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Now, Mr. Mayor, that the matter is back on the floor and reviewing the minutes from the March 1st meeting, it does not appear that there was ever a motion to approve ordinance 524H. It was simply discussed and tabled. There was never a motion to approve or a second. What I'd recommend at this point is a motion to approve with a second. And then because Mr. Chathari is not elected to fulfill the conditions that the planning staff had suggested and because the planning department actually recommended denial of this case, I'd recommend the council then deny the case. So, be a motion to approve and then if you agree with the planning staff and myself, you'd vote no on the actual vote.
Motion to approve ordinance 524H, Alderman, by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Porter. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay?
McGee? Porter?
No.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Nay.
None in favor? None opposed? Never had that happen?
Yep. Thank you. All right. Item B, second reading, ordinance 537H. An ordinance amending Chapter 150 zoning ordinance of the municipal code, Section 150.105D, Institutional District, Section 150.204C, Institutional Land Uses, Table 150.405C, Permitted Intrusions Into Required Yards, and Appendix C, Land Use Summary Chart. Specifically, the amendments are in regards to setbacks for institutional land uses, permitted institutional land uses, and accessibility ramps. So, we had tabled that. That was tabled June 7th. So, do we have a motion to bring that, ordinance 537H, off the table? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry? Any discuss, there is no discussion on a motion to bring it off the table, is there? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Tricked us.
Any, any opposed? Okay. So, we've removed it off the table and then we have...
Mr. Mayor, I put a memo in the packets. As you recall, immediately before the motion to table, Alderman, I believe it was Snow had made a motion to amend with respect to the flagpoles. And at that point, it was tabled so it could be further discussion at committee. At committee, the council, I should say, the committee recommended the language that is actually in tonight's packet that was prepared by the planning department. So, at this point, what I recommend is defeating the original motion to amend. And then, once that's done, there would be a second motion to amend with the language that is attached to the memo specifically to include a new section four relating to flagpoles and flags that set forth in the revised ordinance attached to the memo.
Okay. With that being said, then, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 537H?
That's already been done. There's already a motion. And there was already a motion to amend. That is where we're at right now. And that motion, I think the council really didn't want to pass. They want to do the one that was adopted at committee. And if that's the case, then you defeat the current motion to amend at this point.
Okay. Alderman Snow?
Just for clarity, right now, we're voting on the amendment. The amendment was to include a higher end of the flagpole, which isn't in the memo. So, we want to defeat that, reintroduce it per the memo and go that route. Just so we're all on the same deal here.
That way, we don't have amendments to the amendment, we don't have amendment to the amended motion. This makes it cleaner.
Any other questions? So, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Again, we're defeating the original amendment.
On a roll call?
It's up to you.
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Porter?
Nay.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
None opposed?
Okay.
And then, Your Honor, I'd recommend a motion to amend, to add a new section four to ordinance 537H relating to flagpoles and flags that set forth in the revised ordinance, which was attached to my memo of June 17th, 2021.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. And the new version is, the only difference is on page seven of eight, correct, that addresses flags? Okay. What is that, G? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor then. Do we have any other discussion? Alderman Porter?
Okay. So, we're still sticking with option four then, with the three flags provided per lot?
That's correct.
If you look at the section four G, that's on page seven of eight, that's the... If you look at the section four G, that's on page seven of eight, that's the amendment. Alderman Snow?
And just for clarity, the, the 60 square feet, is that per flag or is that total?
That's per flag.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance 537-H, as stated, will answer yes, any opposed nay?
Prather?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. Then under unfinished business nine C, we have ordinance number 539-H as a second reading. An ordinance amending sections 114-155 resale of water and 114-234 mobile home park bulk purchase of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code.
Mr. Mayor, before we jump to that, I'd ask the clerk, did we actually ever vote upon 537-H as amended?
No, I guess not.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I guess we better go back. All right, let's vote on ordinance 537-H then, as amended, that we had talked about regarding flags. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, any opposed nay?
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. So, item C, ordinance number 539-H, second reading. An ordinance amending sections 114-155 for the resale of water and 114-234 for the mobile home park bulk purchase of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. Do we have a motion regarding 539-H?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Second by, motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
So, Four Seasons is located in Ward 5, and I'm concerned about the lack of oversight by the city concerning these meters. So, Attorney Drolla, does not 210 ILCS 115 give home rule municipalities greater regulatory powers over mobile home parks?
The city with its home rule authority does have authority to adopt ordinances that would be above and beyond that which was the state has done. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, in other words, if we have not adopted any regulations, no, it does not. We'd have to adopt the ordinances to do so. Where you run into problems is specifically ensuring that those ordinances are constitutional, but, yeah. It's no different than landlord tenant ordinance that we proposed six years ago, and the council chose not to adopt.
So because this is a, basically a, a thing between our city water department and these, I guess landlord, could we not have some type of ordinance adopted that we could try to regulate what they're doing with the water meters?
That's what we're doing here. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand the question.
We can't include like some type of oversight on that, like our own meter readers, our own meters, our own installers, anything like that?
Well, they, they do have to pass plumbing inspections, I mean, they have to go get their permits and pass a plumbing inspection, no different than anybody else doing plumbing work on their property. So they will be inspected, if that's your question.
So what you're talking about, Alderwoman Freeman, is then potentially matching up their usage regarding what the city has furnished them regarding water and what they're actually charging?
Well, you know, in our last discussion, it was basically left to, the residents have to, you know, bring in their bill and say, this is how much it says I use this compared to how much it says I owe. And then, then we match that up with how much the city charges for water, and that's the only way we can keep them honest by how they're divvying up who spends what on water, like a, a family of four compared to a family of eight out there. They only have to bring their bill in, right Brett, and try to compare how much they're being billed with how much other water sells for?
Well, that's certainly an option, back when Prairie Place did the transition to the same thing, where they went to the metered system. There was those same concerns were echoed by the residents, and it didn't take too long for them to determine what their normal usage is, what their usage patterns are. And let's face it, everybody here who has in the city gets their water bills, by and large, it's pretty consistent usage over time, just because you have established habits. So, there was a few residents back when they did their transition that did bring the information into us, and we double-checked it and correlated it, and yes, there's no, there was no issues, and and basically, we don't have any issues with Prairie Place anymore at this time because of just the time factor, so I'm sure we'll probably go through that same curve now with these guys. And I say Prairie Place, I mean Greenview Estates, I'm sorry.
The only way you could actually check their bills is if they brought them into us.
Right, okay, so what if, what if there were an issue, then what type of ramifications would we have?
It'd be a violation of our ordinance, if they're overcharging for water, it'd be a violation of our ordinance. So it'd be the same that we have now, which is you would have to cite them and bring them into court if they don't comply.
And, and, yeah, and basically, once they have the meters, if they're investing in that meter system, they're gonna make sure that's accurate and it's doing the job it's intended to do. Otherwise, they wouldn't invest those kind of dollars in that kind of system.
Brent, the, the meters that they're going to put in, they satisfy a certain standard, I take it, correct?
Well, the, the meters themselves, no matter what meters you buy, yes, are built standards and, you know, for measuring and accuracy and so forth. But we do not dictate the types, time, because again, that's, that's, it's on the private side. Our, our responsibility stops with, on our part, nothing changes on our part, they still have the master meters, and that's what we use for billing, that's what we read and bill. We're still billing the entity, not the, not the residents, so ours will not change.
And then Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, we go out and we'll inspect that, they'll have to have an inspection whenever they put them in, is that correct?
Through the building department and through the state plumbing inspector, and actually through the, what's it, Department of Health that monitors mobile home facilities, I believe, Health Department, State Health Department. Through the, so the state health, the state plumbing inspector will be the one that would make those arrangements.
Any other questions?
No.
Anybody?
If you do have any other ones or any other ideas, give me a call, I just really didn't know where you were going with the questions, I'm sorry.
We'll recognize you, the chair will recognize you, yes. Yeah, come up, can you come up, sir?
Hi, my name is John Albertini, I live at 506 Park Avenue, I live at Four Seasons. I guess this is, debate is mostly about the water at the park I live at. I spoke last month here, trying to clarify what these people were, at this meeting, were trying to tell you. Trouble is, some of them don't know themselves. Some of my questions I have are, we're putting into a, a bill that they're gonna have to install meters before they can charge for water, we're putting an amendment in for this. If this is put in, until they put these meters in, are they still gonna be able to charge us for water prematurely? Well, that was one question, the other one is, can we find some way for us to be billed and purchase the water directly from the city instead of an aftermarket through the park? That would give people a more warm and cozy feeling, you know, that somebody more reputable is billing them for their water. I think Four Seasons has proven that they can be above the law. They've already stated they are to your attorney. And there, there is, I don't care, there's the door, go. Their main goal, and I'm gonna tell you it now, is, and people are trying to figure out what the main goal was, to genocide owners. They don't want owners there anymore because they found that they can rent out homes, which we're not allowed to re-lease, and we're told not to, now they're new owners, they can lease. So they're leasing for over double of what we pay in rent. I understand, it's a business. But what they're doing is making it for people who live there unavailable to live there because they can't afford it anymore. Several homes in the last month alone have gone back to the bank because the people couldn't sell it. Because it's not profitable to sell your home anymore there. Because they implemented too many rules, too many extra fees. The manager of my park lived in a, an associated park of these owners, got a heads up ahead of time that this was gonna happen. She gets the advantage of selling her home, moving to Wisconsin, out of the state, out of the city, but she gets the, ahead of time. She couldn't give us that, you know, ahead of time, so that we could try to sell our homes before this happened. Now we can't sell them. The bank calls up them, we got four more homes, they go, okay, we'll buy them. They're not selling them, they're leasing them. Now I've got people all around me, I don't know, every year. Whereas I came from a nice neighborhood, this is their purpose. Next year, they're gonna charge us real estate tax, land tax. I don't own the land, but they're gonna charge me this tax. If I paid that tax, I should be able to do things then, but no, I still gotta follow their rules. I don't see how all this happens, anyways, to get back on the point, I'd like to know, can we buy the water from the city directly instead of aftermarket? If they're gonna, you know, if they're gonna put in meters. Why should we have to go through them when we can't trust them? Is there some way, is all I'm asking, we look into that?
The answer to the question is no.
Okay.
And here's why. We don't own the pipes in your streets. We don't own the streets, we don't own any infrastructure, our infrastructure stops at their two water meters that they have in that park. At the gate.
Okay, and that's just something I wanted to ask.
And because we don't have any of that infrastructure, short of them, and, and I doubt that the public works department of the city would wanna do this, but short of them dedicating all that infrastructure to the city, no, we wouldn't be able to do that. And the difficulty there is, I have no idea what standards it was built to, or if it would meet our current standards, 'cause that would then put the burden of the maintenance upon the city. And right now, it's on the parks, so as it stands right now, no, we cannot do that.
Okay, and that's fine. They, um, the fines or anything that would be imposed on these people for charging water is so minimal, obviously, that they just go, we don't care, we're above the law. See, they're already charging every month when your lease comes up, when you sign, like mine is in October. That's when they're gonna start charging me for water. But people that have already came up on these months, they're paying the water already. They've been notified that they can't, they have to put in meters before they could charge for water. Yet they're continuing, June 1st, they charged a whole group of new people for water. How is this possible if it's illegal? See what I'm saying? If it's illegal, why are we paying it? Why are the city letting them? Where is the, the intervening of this in the fines?
So, in order, two, two aspects, number one, their attorneys disagree with me on the interpretation of current code. That's one of the reasons why the council is adopting this ordinance this evening. My opinion is that, as written existing, although it does not say meters anywhere in that ordinance, the only way you can actually tell how much you're billing an individual home is by having a meter on, on the unit. They disagree with me. So we're doing this ordinance, that's the first thing, it gets them in that position where now they've got black and white, they can't really disagree with me. The second aspect of it, and, and this is just the reality of it, in order for me to prosecute them, we will have to have residents willing to come into court and raise their right hand and testify to each and every bill that they received that's in violation of our ordinance. Absent that, I can't prosecute it.
Okay, so if I bring you a line of people, you'd be willing to?
Yes, I could, but that's after we adopt this ordinance.
Okay.
Now, from the time I file that lawsuit to the time it gets to trial, six months to a year and a half. Hopefully on the shorter end, by that time the meters are in. That's just the reality of it, and they know that, and that's one of the reasons why they're pushing the envelope. So, that being said, it doesn't mean we just give up. We go ahead and we, we go forward with it. But don't be surprised to keep going, getting those bills until there's actually a court that decides one way or the other on it. Because as you said, it doesn't cost them that much to keep billing it. As long as you're all paying it, and I can't tell you not to pay it.
Well, we can't, we can't not pay it, they tell us it's part of the rent. And yet they say it's, it's an additional bill, but yet it's considered part of the rent. If we don't, if we pay our rent and don't pay that water, then we're in default of our rent. Then they're gonna tell us that, hey, you gotta go, you're not paying your rent.
Yeah, that's why I'm not gonna ever recommend that you don't pay it.
Don't pay the water?
No, no, no. No, I'm not saying don't, don't, I'm not recommending that.
Yeah, no, because you get drawn out.
Right.
The fact is, you know, that it is a private, is a private development.
Well, and I understand, and it's great to let, to let people make money, that's the idea of the enterprise of, you know, owning businesses.
It i, it is to a point, but, you know, ordinances, ordinances are put in place to help people so that they, they're not taken advantage of, and we do have it. This will make it so that they should, they can't resale the water. I did have a discussion with an individual out at the park last week, and I made that perfectly clear. And as the city attorney said, well, this is a matter then that will be hashed out legally. But, and, you know, if that's the route they choose to take, then that's a route that they're permitted to do, so.
So we're gonna have to pay this, and, okay, we're gonna have to pay this regardless, we understood that. And the meter's to protect us as an individual paying our share, and that was very nice, and this is what this ordinance is gonna help, and I appreciate that. I just get upset with the fact that once this ordinance is passed, it should be locked in, that they can't charge for water until the meters are in, but they're going to.
The most analogous way to, to explain it is speeding. You can't go more than 25 miles an hour on most streets in the city of Belvidere. People do it all the time, so then I have to go to court when they get a ticket from a police officer to prosecute it. This is very similar. In this case, there's no police officers out there, they're going around checking bills. I will have to actually have residents come in with bills showing this, so then I can go to court and try and get action that way.
Yeah, see, there's, there's tickets you get, after three, they take your license away, well, you can't do that to the park. See what I'm saying? It's so, it's not like speeding, because there is a, a final. This is no final, it seems like they just get to do what they want, I just get bothered with the lobbying think, but, when I'm a part of it. Anyways, so once this ordinance is passed, supposedly they shouldn't be able to charge for the water until they put meters in, but they're going to, correct?
That's my guess.
Okay. So, obviously, the only thing the residents are getting out of this ordinance is the fact that at least we're protecting ourselves as an individual payment for our water, not eight house or six people house, we're paying our share. So it's a good ordinance if this, if it does this. But everywhere, otherwise, everything else I brought up, I think it really doesn't cover. And I wish there was some way you could protect people in the future from things like this. Now, again, you, you know they're gonna start real estate tax, that's legal, I guess, I don't understand that. Property tax, you know, when you don't own the property, how could you have to pay that?
Is it private relationship, no different than if I owned a house and was renting to somebody? Whatever terms you negotiate as far as the rents, let's call it rent.
Yeah, right, I agree.
Is what the rent is.
Yeah, but it doesn't break into individual things, it's just a rent.
You're right. And what they're doing is they're playing a little bit of a game. Because it really is, you just got the tummy on the water, they're calling part of the rent. If you rent a house with the utilities included, it's part of your rent. Some landlords, they rent you the house, and they say you're responsible for your utilities. Okay? But every landlord will break into the value of the cost of the rent, the cost of them operating that house, which would include the real estate taxes. Now, they can say, I'm gonna charge you $900 a month rent and $200 a month in real estate taxes, or they can charge, say they're gonna charge you $1,100 a month in rent.
So it's as a battery to wait.
Right, and it's all what you and they will agree to. Right, and it's all what you and they will agree to in your rental agreements.
Okay. Okay, I think I've got my questions answered. I do appreciate your time. I take up, I take too much of it already, but.
No, no problem. Thank you for coming, Mr. Abertini. Hold on a second. Alderwoman Freeman?
Yeah, um, Mike, so, seems like part of the issue is, um, they're gonna go ahead and charge the water anyway, even though it's illegal, because the amount of the fine to them is miniscule, and it's worth it for them just to go ahead and do that, so can we up the fine to an astronomical amount to where they're gonna say, "Oh geez, maybe not?"
I'm not sure that that's necessary yet. I've already had that conversation with their attorney, reminding him that each violation is a separate violation, maximum fine is $750, minimum is $95. And each day of the fine, each day that that violation occurs is a separate offense. So in theory, take one home over 30 days, minimum fine's $3,000. So it's not necessarily miniscule. The problem is their attorneys know it as well as I do, the judges aren't, just aren't gonna impose that. It's just not very likely at all. Um, and the other problem is, is knowing that the, is getting more than that one. It's getting significant people out there. My goal at this point is, if this passes, which I assume it will, um, obviously a copy to their attorneys. Uh, it's effective in 10 days, as are all of our ordinance that impose liability. Um, and at that point, hopefully they back off of this. We're gonna bill our clients anyway. I'm not holding my breath on that from talking to their attorneys.
I wouldn't either.
Um, but hopefully they do, and if they don't, at that point, we gotta revisit getting people in here so I can file a lawsuit, maybe get a restraining order if I can. But I don't wanna create any, um, unfair hope because whenever you get litigation going, it takes a while for it to work through the system. In the meantime, yes, they may be being paying these bills. Whether or not they end up owing money back at some point in the future, I don't know. But in the meantime, you're kinda stuck in that position because litigation just doesn't happen overnight.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for me?
Alderwoman Prather?
Um, actually, this is for Attorney Durell. So from the time that this goes into effect, you said it's like a 10-day. So from that point on, if they bill anybody for any water prior to these meters being put in, then that's a violation of the ordinance.
Oh no, it's my opinion, they're violation right now if they're billing. That's my opinion.
Okay, so is there a time limit that they have? That they, like a grace period or whatever that they actually have to?
No, no, none at all.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
No, none at all. And again, I, I, I don't have bills or, I've had a couple people call and stuff like that, but they usually don't leave a name. Marissa has hand up.
Mr. Henderson?
Just a quick question. Do you know, sir, are they billing everybody the same amount, or is it varied? Do you know what's being billed or how?
No, I know exactly what's being billed. What they do is they're taking a certain percentage and saying that's community. They're taking that out right off the top for the entire bill. Then they take the 585 homes and they divide that for the remainder of the bill. Each person, but see, right now that doesn't work that way. Because there's, they haven't got around to the full shift of three, you know, 12 months. Because it's every month when you come up, so until January 1st, not everybody will be on board. That's even weirder is you've got, this is June, so six months, you've only got 50% of the park paying right now, and they're paying one 580, well, not even, whatever their 50%, so 260-something homes are only paying. And they're paying a portion of that right now. And here's a guy, "I'm not paying yet till October." That's not right at all. It should either, everybody January 1st or everybody December 31st. Not every month we're gonna start drawing another few hundred people, and so no, not everybody's paying the same, and every month it's gonna change. Um, but if you, if you've got eight people in your house or two people in the house, if you're paying right now, you're paying the same amount as those two homes.
Right, but you're theoretically, you've been paying for the water all along as part of your rent or whatever.
Rent, it was, yeah, it was included. Garbage, water and store were included.
And I'm assuming yours hasn't gone down, even though you're theoretically not paying for water, you're still paying for it included in your rent.
Correct.
So are the people that are being billed for the water now, did they see a reduction in the rent?
No.
Did they say this is an, this is an additional payment in addition to the rent?
This is an addition to not having to increase your rent. We're not gonna increase your rent this year. We're gonna just do this.
Okay.
And I do wanna make something real clear to the council. In a sense, this is a bit of a red herring. And it's just the way this park has chosen to build. The way the park is billed, since before Amos owned the property, water was included with the rent. So all landlord did was said, "I wanna make this much money. These are my projected operating costs, 'cause this is my water bills have been for the last five years." They averaged it amongst all the homeowners, just like they proposed to do in this case. It's not like all of a sudden they are really changing or wanting to change the way they did things. It's just being, said being in the rent, they're averaging amongst all the lots. And this was a discussion we had internally, and I said, "Well, wait a second." Yeah, they could get, they could get to the same end result by not having a separate water line item on their bill and just include it in the rent. And we would never be having this discussion. And, but they wanted to separate it out. If you ask their attorney is the reason they wanna do it, they give you a, a, an answer that goes along the lines of, "We're very environmentally conscious and we want people to know how much water they're using." And we want people to, if they see how much water they're using, reduce their usage. That's their stated reason. The real reason likely is, "I can only really raise rent 5% per year." Or 6% per year, or whatever it is, 7% per year.
And they circumvented that by doing this?
So I wanna be able to raise my rent by 7% and also bill for the water. So that's probably the real reason they're doing that, but they've never stated that, and I can't, I'm not clear of one, I can't read their minds. I'm surmising. But the reality is, they can charge whatever rent the market will bear. And if they wanna leave the water rolled in with the rent as they have in the past, you'd be at the same exact end result, end result, with it being averaged amongst all the lots. It's just your rent payment would be higher. So the reality is, what they're doing now is no different than they've been doing for 10 years.
Alderman Porter?
Okay, I guess I'll ask a question. I, I can understand the water department not wanting to take over the lines because we didn't install them. But, um, I guess I'm not really seeing how this is any different than the police and fire service that we already give to them, how the water service would be any different, even though it's private subdivision. And these meters, if I remember correctly, we don't send a meter reader around anymore, they're all automatically read through the, um, a frequency, you know, through the airways basically, so why don't we, can we just put individual meters in through our water department in each house and just take the park out of it completely and just charge them individually?
That was my question.
I don't think they'd agree to it, I imagine. Yeah, they're the owners of the land. We can't just go onto their land and force them to. Well, I know, but that's because they are actually connected to our system directly, as opposed through a third party's system. That one I'd have to specifically research, but the reality is they've already purchased their meters. Um, and no, they're not ready to read meters as far as I know.
They're not what?
I doubt they're ready to read meters. They will not be connected to our system.
Yes, they'll be automatic, they're not gonna be, uh.
I mean, automatic to our system.
Yeah, but it'll be automatic to a system.
Right.
It won't be a meter reader going out. So you, if you could get, obtain this, you can obviously obtain the meter reading system.
Yeah, I.
I know, I don't mean to.
You'd be basically having a piece of city equipment connect up to the private system, which I think, I don't know, I'd have to research that.
And can we buy, can we buy that, when they install the meters, buy it from the city? You know, instead, so we own the meters now, the city. Not, you know, they put them in already, they purchased them. Why can't we buy them from them and put them in?
We don't buy meters, homeowners buy meters. They have to, they have to buy them from us, but we don't buy them.
I understand, well then why, why can't we do that?
Well, I thi- I think once the system is in and it's operational, again, based on the, and it's the same park owner that owns Greenview, that owns Four Seasons now, they're in the same ownership. So they've already got that track record on, on Greenview. There are no issues in Greenview that, that we are aware of or have been made aware of now. I think once the, the system is in and operational, I think it'll be just fine. As far as the city taking that over or becoming an owner, I'm not looking to gain 800 or 900 or however many sites are out there. Um, that's a fairly large addition, and that's all that additional burden, additional billings, additional work that we have to do that we currently don't have to do. You're talking about going from two meters to 800 plus. Um, and then if you're gonna do that, then you're gonna wanna take over all that entire infrastructure and all those costs and and main breaks and everything else that is now private, that is now maintained by them. The records out there are not very good. We were, we had some questions in Santeri Sewer, we asked for some mapping, they don't really have any. So there's a lot of stuff out there, again, because it was built according to the public, state public health department standards, not subdivision control standards. I would highly recommend that we do not go down that path.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much for coming back, Mr. Abertini.
I appreciate it. This bill though will be passed, I'm gonna sit and listen, uh, so please do so. Uh, to give, give us some sanity. Because we're just getting run amok. And the poor thing is, I've only been there five years, promised the world, new owners come in and boy did I get screwed. Um, and it's just a shame, but it is a private company and they could do what they want, and God bless them, so. But I'll sit and listen for the vote. I appreciate your time, everybody, thank you.
Thank you again for coming. All right, uh, so we have a motion in a second, correct, on the floor for ordinance 539H, uh, second reading and ordinance amending Sections 114-155 resale of water and 114-234 mobile home park bulk purchase of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. All those in agreement will answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. Number 10, under new business, uh, is a first reading, ordinance number 540H. An ordinance granting a zoning district change from SR-6, single-family residential dash six district and neighborhood business district located at 817 North State Street. Uh, item B, under new business, for first reading, ordinance number 541H. An ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the neighborhood business district at 817 North State Street. Uh, item C, for a first reading, ordinance number 543H. An ordinance amending Section 110-198B. Parking prohibited at all times of the City Municipal Code at Willow, Willowbrook Drive. And item D is, uh, actually for action, a motion to waive the layover requirements for Section 2-87G for the ordinance providing for the appointment of lateral hires for the City of Belvidere Police Department. We have a motion on the floor, do we have, we have a motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry, any discussion, any questions? I think we'd went over this at committee level regarding, but we certainly have Deputy Chief Gardner here to answer any questions, anybody might have follow-up. Hearing none, then we have a motion and a second then to waive the layover requirement for Section 2-87G. Uh, all those in favor, um, will signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. And then we move to item E, ordinance number 542H, regarding of ordinance providing for the appointment of lateral hires for the City of Belvidere Police Department. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, any comments? Alderwoman Prather, uh, Freeman?
Thank you, so I, I'm not sure this is a good thing for Belvidere. I watched the meeting last week that I wasn't able to attend, and, um, seems like we're looking to get, um, recruits from all different states, from all over the country even, that don't even have to be from Illinois, let alone our area. Um, I know that their union contract states say have to live within a 25-mile radius of the community they serve, and I disagree with that too. But, that's beside the point. Um, I don't think that officers coming from California are just gonna transplant to Belvidere and automatically love this community. It's basically just a job. And I, I, I think the closer to home we can get our officers, the better off we are.
Alderman Snow?
And, and I get your point, um, Ms. Freeman, but the fact is that they've already tried to secure these experienced people to avoid to have to send them to an academy that's already overbooked and having issues supplying enough officers and being able to have slots. So this allows them the ability to hire somebody, and my understanding is, Belvidere, because we are, um, a great community, and they've made it a great community in their policing, that this is a desirable place for many people to potentially do police work. Because they know the end results are gonna be good, and they're not gonna be, um, and they're supported by the community and the councils.
All right, uh, if we'd address the chair instead of addressing each other, that'd be great. Alder, Alderman Flurry?
Yeah, just have a comment, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but we're not changing the requirement, there's still highly qualified applicants, and it's still up to our police department to make sure we're choosing the right applicants that are gonna meet their requirements, what we want for Belvidere. All this is doing is giving you a little more flexibility to find more qualified applicants as opposed to waiting for someone that isn't qualified.
Yeah, that is correct. At the current time, there's a three-year requirement for applicants within the state of Illinois to do a lateral transfer, uh, instead of just going through the regular testing process. What this does is this opens up the opportunity for us to seek, uh, highly qualified candidates from other uh, departments, preferably, I agree, preferably regionally, uh, for us, and so far that's the interest that, uh, that we're experiencing is, uh, on a regional basis, uh, meaning, meaning Northern Illinois. In the current climate of law enforcement, uh, now is a really great time for us to be able to capitalize on that uh, as far as, uh, just being fiscally responsible. If we're able to uh, capitalize at a moment where, where there's anti-law enforcement rhetoric, uh, amongst other communities, uh, and our department, our city, and the support that our, that our council here gives and our people gives, if that is able to attract other candidates that have, uh, you know, one to two years of law enforcement experience and they're early in their career, this is a very attractive opportunity for them to come to a place where they're supported.
Alderman Porter?
Yeah, and I'd like to reinforce that too, and I'm not gonna try not to get too upset about this whole thing, but if anybody's paying attention nationally to what's happening, with all the police officers are quitting, I think we see the writing on the wall of what's, what's gonna happen to everybody, and I don't see this changing anytime soon, so I'd like to, you know, express my support that we are, we could end up with no police officers, you know, or short of police officers because of what's happening, happening nationally, you know, so nobody wants to be a police officer anymore because of what's happening, so again, I think the writing's on the wall.
Anything else? Uh, Deputy Chief Gardner?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd just like to add also, uh, on the fiscal responsibility of this, you know, if, if we're gonna hire a, a brand-new police officer that has no experience, that takes, uh, a minimum of eight months to get them to a point in time where they might be ready to be released on their own for solo patrol. Uh, at the current time, I believe we're down four officers. As we're able to hire qualified lateral candidates, uh, we're able to get them, uh, you know, pro, uh, hopefully operational here on their own, you know, possibly in, um, you know, two to three months. Uh, at a significantly less cost as well, not having to pay for the academy.
two to three months, at a significantly less cost as well, not having to pay for the academy, not having to pay for them to be at the academy, not having to pay field training officers for, you know, four to five months as well. It's a large potential savings.
And also, would you say then it's fair to, that we don't pay overtime then to cover shift until they complete their?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At the current time, as we are down four, we're having to periodically and regularly pay overtime for officers to fill vacant positions to meet minimum staffing requirements.
And then this reduces that drastically?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I believe that what's happening is police officers are being held accountable, and if that's making people not wanna be a police officer, then I don't know what to tell them. My question is, what constitutes a good candidate? Is it their record, or is it their test scores?
No, it's clearly, clearly their, their record, their reputation. That's why we have a thorough background investigation process. It is not a situation where anyone that applies for a lateral position is a quality candidate. We have a due diligence process that we go through with the Fire and Police Commission, as well as our background investigators, to, to select the right people for our community.
So in other words, if we find an individual and they're an applicant, and we do a background check, we have, we reserve the right to deny employment?
Through the Fire and Police Commission, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, then. We have ordinance five forty-two H, an ordinance providing for the appointment of lateral hires for the City of Belvidere Police Department. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, and those opposed nay when their name is called.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. Moving on, then, motions of Public Works. Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you. A, motion to approve the 2021 landfill number two annual services agreement with TRC. This work is included in the landfill budget and paid for from account number zero one dash zero five dash three three five dash seven nine zero zero.
Okay. We have a motion out of committee, then. Is there any other discussion? Any questions? Alderman Snow?
It's not necessarily specific to this particular item, but just a general question to Brent. Being that we did dissolve the City-County Coordinating Committee, and a bulk of what got decided there generically got approved was landfill stuff, do you see any big issues that, that committee has been dissolved, or, because you seem to have always had oversight on the city's end to monitor and, you know, keep right and heard on what's needed and being in the loop?
Yes. As far as landfill services, it's, yeah, there's no difference. We still have the, have the communication. In fact, the county board just approved these two items that we're talking about tonight. County Board's already approved both of those.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So Brent, as long as I've been here and I was on City-County, we've never really used anybody but TRC for any of our landfill stuff. Have we ever looked into anybody else?
We have probably the last time, if I were to look back in the files, I would wanna say it's probably around nineteen, eh, probably the early to mid nineties, I think, is when the last time we did this. And if you recall the discussion, that's why there was an extension made, because we thought with some turnovers at TRC and some actions that were coming up, we thought perhaps it would be, now would be the time to review it. Based on our discussions, our last meeting with EPA down in Springfield, and the responses we received from them, both the county, the new county administrator and myself feel that sticking with TRC is probably in our best interest at this point in time to continue that relationship, which is why we're recommending the, the approval of the balance of the 2021 services.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, then. We have a motion out of committee, a motion to approve the 2021 landfill number two annual services agreement with TRC. This, this work is included in the landfill budget and paid for from account number zero one dash zero five dash three three five dash seventy-nine hundred. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Wanna ask by the clerk. Any opposed, nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Alderwoman Freeman?
B, motion to approve the proposal from TRC in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the installation of up to five PVC monitoring wells at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number Two. The cost of this work will be split fifty-fifty with the county, and our portion will be paid for from account number zero one dash five dash three three five dash seventy-nine hundred.
Thank you. Motion out of committee. Is there any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
So is this forty-seven, seven hundred our portion, or is that what's gonna be split?
That's what's gonna be split. That's the total cost up to, for those five wells. They're gonna, they're gonna put well, one well in first, see what those results are, get that information to EPA, based on what the response we give to EPA, and hopefully it's a good response, then we'll go ahead and put the four, up to four additional wells in. And again, if we have to do that, that's good news on our part, because that hopefully will satisfy the EPA's concerns on some of the metals that are showing up.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, then. We have a motion on the floor out of committee, a motion to approve the proposal from TRC in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the installation of up to five PVC monitoring wells at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number Two. The cost of this work will be split fifty-fifty with the county, and our portion will be paid from account number zero one dash five dash three three five dash seventy-nine hundred. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Frank?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Alderwoman Freeman, continue, please.
Thank you. C, motion to approve the street closure request at Whitney and Buchanan, and then just beyond, municipal parking lot number ten, for the Kegels Summer Tour Twenty-One Ride that will be at Jack Rose on July eighth from six PM to nine PM.
Okay, we, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Any comments? All right, that can be a roll, that can be a voice follow-up. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Chairwoman Freeman?
D, motion to approve the block party request at four twenty-nine West Hurlebut Avenue on July tenth, 2021, from two PM to eight PM.
Any discussion, comments, concerns? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the block party request at four twenty-nine West Hurlebut Avenue on July tenth, from two to eight PM, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Chairwoman Freeman. All right, motions out of planning zoning. Chairman Porter?
Okay, motion to consent to the appointment of Art Hyland to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term ending May 2026.
Okay, any discussion regarding Mr. Hyland's appointment or reappointment? Mr. Hyland has been around this community for many, many years, and has given a lot of his time, as a lot of the aldermen know, and even people that aren't aldermen know, so it goes pretty much without saying. So all those in favor of the consent for the appointment of Art Hyland to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term ending in May, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Chairman Porter. Motions out of public safety, Chairman Stevens?
Motion to approve the purchase of the new EC IR two breathalyzer at the cost not to exceed eight thousand, five hundred dollars using funds budgeted in the year 2022 budget. Equipment, equipment line item zero one dash five dash two one zero dash eight two zero zero.
Thank you, Chairman Stevens. Do we have any discussion or questions for Deputy Chief Gardner, or anything else? I thought we'd covered that before, but if we have any, now is the time to get them out. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So this might not make me popular with the council, but I feel like I was elected to say some things that need to be said. So hear me out. As elected alderman, it is our responsibility to hold departments accountable for both their spending and reputations within the community. This is true for Public Works, Community Development, Fire, and Police respectively. We are not only beholden to our constituents in a legal sense, but a moral one as well. I was born in Belvidere and have been a lifelong resident. You have heard me preach countless times about what Belvidere once was, a thriving municipality with countless shops, grocery stores, bars, restaurants, and entertainment venues. Believe it or not, we once had both an indoor and outdoor theater, a roller skating rink, a mini-pot facility, and a go-kart track. We had jewelry stores, clothing and shoe stores, gift shops, five-and-dimes, florists, and multiple grocery stores all functioning at the same time. We had a multitude of bars, many that hosted live bands for Saturday night dancing in every genre. Your choice of dining here consisted of places like Jardine Supper Club, The Huddle, Casamia, Grandpa's Italian Restaurant, The Little Schoolhouse, Dog and Sud, Smack Drive-In, Gold Corral, Nick's Stone House, Ambrosio's, Gold Coin, The Crystal Chandelier, Butler's Cafe, Lung Fung, or good old-fashioned Friday Night Fish Fry at Dodge Lanes, all places I frequented often with my family growing up here. All but Lung Fung are gone. Belvidere's infamous Cruise Night put us on the map, and people came from coast to coast. We no longer have even one theater, let alone a mini-pot or roller rink. Our grocery stores have been replaced with a Salvation Army store and a now-empty used car lot building. Our storefronts have been replaced with slot machines, secondhand shops, hair salons, and an overabundance of pizza joints. And Cruise Night that once packed our streets and establishments is all but dead. Just this weekend, when my family was contemplating dinner, our choices consisted of Applebee's, steam plant, Uncle John's, Lung Fung, Mexican pizza, or fast food. Sadly, we, like most Belvidere residents, ended up spending our money in Rockford. I've asked myself a million times, what happened to my town? The only logical conclusion that a thinking person can reach is that the then Sheriff Worth deemed Belvidere, quote, "tough on crime," and moved aggressively forward with his agenda to essentially deter all non-residents and implemented a pull-every-car-over policy for the most minor infraction. In doing so, and as word spread, our town, my town, garnered a reputation for hundreds of miles in every direction as a "you don't wanna go there" town. Consequently, our stores closed, our restaurants went out of business, and our entertainment venues collapsed. Did our crime rate fall? No. We still have gang activity, car thefts, bank and store robberies, vandalism, addiction, and burglaries. The concept didn't work then, and it's not working now. Businesses within a city the size of Belvidere cannot survive without bringing in and welcoming patrons from surrounding communities. The days of playing Mayberry and rolling up the streets by ten PM need to end. It is a fact that the state of Illinois deemed Belvidere as disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, as documented by the high rate of marijuana incarcerations per capita. I believe that we are also disproportionately affected by the rate of DUIs per capita. As an alderman for the past four years, and also during my recent campaign, I've talked to more residents than I can count. The two consistent complaints from nearly every one of them is the lack of shopping and dining here and the police. I can tell you countless stories of people targeted for simply pulling up too far over the white line at a stop sign, failing to use their turn signal when changing lanes downtown, being on their cell phone when they didn't even have their phone in the car with them, license plate bulbs out, or leaving Burger King after nine PM and being asked if they've been drinking since it looked like they were coming from backstop. I can tell you about a man who drove through Little Caesar's Drive-Up with his son to get a pizza. When they asked him to pull forward, he had trouble parallel parking in the congested lane, and the establishment deemed him drunk. They called the police, who subsequently showed up. Not one officer or two, but four. They asked him if he'd been drinking. He said no. They asked him to blow into the breathalyzer. He said, "You have no cause, since I have not been drinking. You cannot possibly smell alcohol on me." They made him exit the vehicle and perform a sobriety test. They then insisted he blow again, and said, "If you blow under a point three, we will let you go. Otherwise, you're being arrested." He relented and blew a point zero 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 because he had not been drinking. The officer said okay and left, but not before visibly humiliating the man in front of the other Little Caesar's patrons and his son, all because some drive-thru workers suspected him? Are our officers not trained to know when someone is drunk or not? All these stories, and many more, are circulated by word of mouth, and now on social media. If you think for one second that prospective investors and developers do not have teams of people who do nothing but scour social media for negative relationships between a police force and the community it serves, you're dead wrong. Any person looking to open a business here seeks out these things. All of this, coupled with recent bad press coverage of police brutality here, and a YouTube video that has gone viral about an incident at the post office, is an extreme detriment to growth. It should be more than obvious with our struggle to keep businesses and our inability to attract new ones. I'm tired of hearing these stories. I'm tired of not having anything here. I'm tired of hearing people say, "Don't go to Belvidere." I'm tired of watching businesses fail and not attracting new ones. I'm tired of taxpayers and residents being harassed by those they pay to protect and serve them. We do not need another breathalyzer machine. We need an inclusive police force who actually targets those perpetuating felonious crimes. Our reputation needs to change, and unfortunately, it will probably take a whole generation to achieve, but we have to start somewhere. Please don't think I am against DUI laws or enforcing them. By all means, if a person can't keep up between the lines and is endangering themselves or others on the road, they deserve to be prosecuted. However, failing to use a turn signal, a block from home late at night with no other traffic on the road does not constitute losing one license and financial ruin. I, too, have been personally touched by drunk driving. My uncle was killed innocently on his way home from work, leaving behind my then-two-year-old cousin and his pregnant wife. My nephew, as we speak, is wheelchair-bound and has undergone numerous surgeries on his legs, only to maybe never walk again after being T-boned when a drunk driver failed to yield at a stop sign at sixty miles per hour. I don't think that more DUIs in this town and another DUI machine at the police station is gonna help us at all. The bottom line is, when you blow at the, at the, at the squad car on the street, if you're a little bit under the limit, they can still take you to the police station, keep you there for forty-five minutes while your blood alcohol goes up, and then make you blow again into the machine that they're asking for, and then now you're over the limit, so here's your DUI and ruin your life. Otherwise, you could have been two blocks from home and safely made it there, still under the limit. I'm definitely opposed to this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Well, yes, Alderwoman Prather?
Yeah, so this unit was to actually replace one that was faulty, was it not?
So, this unit was to actually replace one that was faulty, was it not?
Yes, correct. The one that we have at the police department is completely obsolete, it is not serviceable any longer, and of course, it is used to enforce the DUI laws, to protect our families, our loved ones, our loved ones, our residents, and everybody that visits and lives in Belvidere, as well as it's used to process minors that have consumed alcohol, and that we can't take into the jail to use the breathalyzer there with that being housed by adults.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
I have a question about the blood alcohol limit. Can you be arrested if you blow under .08 for intoxication? Can it be, like, to your discretion, you can arrest somebody if it's lower?
Yes, there's two different statutes. There's one for blowing, for being DUI .08 or more, and there's one for being DUI. For example, if you have someone that, that through your sobriety testing, you know and you're training and experienced to be driving on the influence of alcohol, but they refuse to blow into the breathalyzer, you could still charge them for DUI, just not the DUI .08 or greater, as well as you could be charged for a .05. As Alderman Freeman was describing, if you're under a .03, you're presumed to not be under the influence of alcohol, and I know of several circumstances where personnel, as she described, have released those people as well.
But it's up to the police officer, it's his discretion, if you blow .07 or .08, you can still arrest them?
Yes, you could.
Okay. Any other? Alderman Burden?
Thank you, Mayor, just a question for the deputy chief. Deputy Chief, what will we do with the old machine?
The old machine is completely obsolete and unserviceable. We're actually very fortunate to have had it last as long as it had, it's been needing to be repaired for about the last three years. I don't, I don't know at this particular time that, that we have any plans for what to do with that machine, being that it's not even able to be serviced any longer.
Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody else, anything else? All right, hearing none, we have a motion then out of committee to authorize the purchase of a new EC-IR2 breathalyzer at a cost of not to exceed $8,500 using funds budgeted in fiscal year '22, equipment line item number 01-5-210-8200. All those, when their name is called, will answer aye, any opposed, nay?
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Thank you. And motions of finance and personnel, Chairman Burden?
Thank you, Mayor. G, motion to appoint Gail Stelton-Paul to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, any discussion, any comments, any concerns? Hearing none, Alderwoman Frank?
It's not really a question, I was just wondering if sometime that they could come and speak, since they're on the tax levy, if maybe they could give reports monthly?
Yeah, I agree.
And we could meet them?
Sure, I'd love, I'd love to have them come down anytime they'd like. It's hard enough to get an appointment, so I don't know how much luck we're gonna have getting them down here, but we can try, so, yes, you're welcome. Okay, motion to appoint Gail Stelton-Paul to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, when asked by the clerk, and any opposed, nay?
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Chairman Burden?
Thank you. Letter H, motion to reappoint Donna Donato to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. Any discussion, concerns, questions regarding Donna Donato's appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, when the clerk calls a roll, any opposed, nay?
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Item I, motion to reappoint Dawn Brooks to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee then, for the reappointment of Dawn Brooks to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding that appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, when asked by the clerk, any opposed, say nay?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, that's no other business on the agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any objections, or you want to go home?
Let's go home.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We had your chance. For the record, we adjourned at 8:44. Thank you, everybody.